I'm going to call the meeting of the Norco City Council back to order. We will now have a report of actions taken in closed session.
Yes, City Council considered those matters listed on the agenda in closed session, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. So if you'll please stand for both. Our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Hoffman.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
This time, I'd like to invite Pastor Rosales from Beacon Hill Assembly of God to the podium for a prayer.
Thank you. Please bow your heads and close your eyes as we go to the Lord in prayer. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you tonight, Father, for your grace, your mercy, and your loving kindness. We thank you, Father, for the opportunity we have to gather in this place, Lord Jesus. Father, as we come before you, we ask for your blessings, Lord, upon every council member here tonight. We ask for your blessings upon the city of Norco and every citizen of Norco, Father God. We pray, Father God, your guidance, direction, Lord Jesus, as the council meets tonight to discuss city business, Lord. We pray specifically, Lord God, for city service members, our firefighters, our policemen and women, our schools and students and teachers, Lord, and our children, Father God. We pray, Lord God, that you be with each one of them, Lord Jesus. And we pray, Father God, for every city official, Lord God, whom you have placed in a position of authority and leadership, Lord God, may they honor you, Lord Jesus, with integrity, truth, and humility, Lord God. And we ask all these things, Lord Jesus, in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, we are going to start with the recognition. We have two young ladies here to be recognized for their accomplishments at Norco High School. So if Rebecca and Michaela would join me at the podium, and then if my fellow council members would join me down there as well, please. (laughter) in wrestling at Norco High. So I'm going to read a couple of things. Rebecca, come stand by me. And Michaela, move over so they can see you guys. There we go. Look at all of them, they're here for you guys. So, a couple of things. So we have Michaela, she's a sophomore at Norco High School in her second year of wrestling. She's earned a varsity letter in wrestling both years. This is her second year as team captain, and she's also been named to the district's All-League Academic Team for both years. Last year as a freshman, she had a bunch of victories. Most notably, she placed fifth in CIF. This year, she's improved on that with first-place finishes at both Eisenhower in Rialto and Rodeo Girl in Norco. Fifth at the Queen of the Hill in Corona. Fourth at Lady Saints in San Dimas. Second at CIF. Fourth at Masters. And seventh place in the state of California. Rebecca is a senior. This is her third year wrestling at Norco High School. She's earned a varsity letter all three years. She is also in her second year as team captain, and she has recorded the most victories by pin for the second year in a row. This year, 27 of them. That's huge. She was voted MVP this year by her teammates. She has placed at CIF twice before. This year, she placed fifth at Carter in Rialto, first at Eisenhower in Rialto, first at Rodeo Girl in Norco, fifth at Queen of the Hill in Corona, third at Lady Saints in San Dimas, second at Nordavista in Riverside, second in CIF, third at Masters. And Rebecca is the fourth-place lady wrestler in the state of California.[318.66][318.66](applause) Both of these young ladies are the first female wrestlers to place at the state level. Rebecca, with her fourth-place finish, is the highest-placing wrestler, boy or girl, in the history of Norco High School.[338.63][338.63](applause) So, on behalf of the Norco City Council, we would like to present you guys with these certificates of recognition, and we have other people that are here to recognize you as well. So Rebecca, here's your certificate. And Michaela, here is your certificate. And we'll take a picture real quick with council and ladies, so if you want to... So we'll go in front of the podium real quick, and then we're going to call up the coach, and then the principal, and the assistant principal, and there's someone in the audience from Congressman Calvert's office as well. Yeah, so it's a pretty big deal. So if you girls will come up here in the front, and we'll take a picture.
Take their hand, but I don't want to get thrown down.[393.13][393.13](laughter)
Robin Johnson, coaches?
Why don't you get right here?
Do you want to talk after the congressman's office, or do you want to talk now?
We're done.
Okay. All right. Would you like to come up from Congressman Calvert's office? Thank you. Hi, girls, you're not done?
Notice the Norco High graduates stay up here. We know what to do.[481.53][481.53](laughter)
Good evening. Honorable mayor, council members, staff, distinguished guests, residents. My name is Brenda Dendsted, and I'm here tonight on behalf of our congressman, Ken Calvert, and this is the best part of my job. It is a very special evening for me. Not only do I have the pleasure of being here in place of congressman who sincerely wishes he could spend more time in the district for wonderful events like this tonight in honoring these two outstanding girl wrestlers. But I ignored the coach as I walked in because I know the coach. Because the coach knows me as the wrestling mom that beats these girls up, that hauls everybody around, that keeps the coaches in check at all the tournaments, and makes it run smooth because I want to go home and watch Hallmark.[545.29][545.29](laughter) Right? So I'm sure this is a big surprise for the girls, who have no idea because I show up in my pullover sweatshirt, wearing my ratty jeans, yelling at them all day. I've known Rebecca all the years that she's been wrestling. It is certainly an honor to be here for her tonight. Michaela, we've got a couple more years to go, so I still get to yell at you all the time. I met Rebecca when she had a lot of attitudes storming off the mat one day because she did not... She was not the victor of that match. But you know what? Sometimes you've got to brush it off, and you've got to keep going because there's always a win on the other side. And she's got an outstanding coaching staff, and she's done very, very well. So it is with great pleasure and pride tonight that I present you with certificates of achievement from our congressman, Ken Calvert.[607.04][607.04](applause) I absolutely want to picture... Oh, my God, somebody grab my phone out of my purse.[632.16][632.16](laughter)
For a picture.
Almost.
So Principal Ebison and Coach Danny, if you want to come up and say a little... A few words about the girls, or your time with Coach.
You first. Go ahead.
Yeah, he'll take it.
Good evening. Madam Mayor Grunmeyer, thank you very much, and esteemed City Council, thank you for the time. It's a great, great opportunity for us to recognize some girls. I know that Rebecca's been with the program since we first started, I believe, because it's only been, I believe, in place three years. And so girls' wrestling on our campus is relatively new. So to get to this level this quickly, it's pretty darn amazing, and it also is a testament to our coaching staff and the athletic department in what they do. Josh Cameron, our athletic director in the back, deserves a lot of credit for that. He does a lot to support the programs at the school. But really, it comes down to our coaching staff. Coach Perseida does a lot. He's the boys' coach, but he does help a lot with the women. And then Danny Kaplannik, who I've known for many years, and a fantastic gentleman, always been a supporter of Norco High since his kids went through the school, and he's just a pleasure to have on campus. So Danny, I'm going to let you say a couple of words about the girls.
What can I say? These girls are tough.[766.73][766.73](laughter) Tough, tough girls, very hard workers. You know, it's a tremendous pleasure getting to sit mat-side and watch them wrestle because really, that's, that's pretty much my job. Coach Ray, you know, he is just invaluable teaching technique, working with these kids, the boys and the girls as well. And really, I get to stand up here, I get to take the bows, be with the girls, and just, I think I've actually been told, "Coach, just sit on the side and watch, and we'll get it done." It's been, for the last three years, it's been a tremendous pleasure to get these... Watch these young ladies grow up and mature and become better wrestlers, and it's just... It's a great joy in my life. And I just want to say, thank you, ladies.[828.26][828.26](applause)
So on behalf of the Norco City Council, thank you, congratulations, and thank you for representing Norco High School and your city so well in the state of California. Congratulations, girls. Let's give them one more big round of applause.[846.66][846.66](applause) All right. The next item on the agenda is our business appreciation. So I'm going to call up our EDAC chair, Mr. Scott DeRosa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to invite up Lauren Gephardt, the manager of Linda's Feed and Supply. Hi, Laura. Come on, step right over here.[888.13][888.13](laughter) So good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott DeRosa, and I'm a member of the Norco Economic Development Advisory Council, known as EDAC. And on behalf of the City Council and EDAC, I am pleased to assist Mayor Grunmeyer with awarding this month's Business Appreciation Award to Linda's Feed and Supply. Norco, as we know it, is Horstown USA, and Linda's Feed and Supply has had a vested interest as a retailer of feed and supplies here since 1992. Located in the middle of our historic downtown district of Horstown USA, they are a great asset to that area of Norco. The founder, Linda Tain, I'm saying it correctly, has prided her company's ability to supply our city and other local communities with not only livestock feed and supplies, but also with specialty feeds for unique animals. Linda's Feed and Supply also takes great pride in providing the best customer service humanly possible by employing Norco folk, with a high percentage of their employees being from Norco High School. Linda's Feed and Supply has also regularly sponsors Norco Fair, Horse Week, FFA Banquets, The Barn Dance, and they provide lots of raffle gifts to the horse clubs and horse shows. Because of their employment of our local community members, providing tax revenue that helps support our Norco lifestyle, and being a huge supporter of many community events, we are happy to recognize Linda's Feed and Supply as our business appreciation recipient for April. And I'm going to turn the mic over to Madam Mayor to go ahead and read the certificate.
So it's my pleasure, on behalf of the City Council, to present you with the certificate that recognizes and honors you for providing gracious service to loyal Norco customers for more than 25 years while celebrating the true spirit of Horstown USA. So at this time, I'm going to let Lauren say a few words.
On behalf of Linda and our entire team at Linda's Feed, we'd like to thank you, the city of Norco, for this honor. It's been our privilege, privilege, privilege for the last 27 years to service not only the customers, but the animals, and to grow with the city as we have been. So thank you, everyone.[1031.43][1031.43](applause)
Congratulations again.
Thank you very much, nice meeting you.
You too.
So we are going to go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number One with City Council Communications and Reports on Regional Boards. So we will go ahead and start with Councilman Hanna.
Thank you, Mayor. Not much to report this week. Start off with Vector. Tomorrow at UCR, beginning at 10:00 a.m., they have an insect fair. And remind all of you about the mosquitoes and the weeds and stuff like that, your water containers, because the mosquitoes are getting bad, and they're going to get worse, and they're expecting a really tough battle this year with West Nile virus. So vaccinate your horses and take care of yourself. RTA ridership is up, and RTA's world champion bus driver from two years ago, Kyle Jones, he won the local contest this year. He won the Southern California Regional in Los Angeles last week. Now he's headed to Louisville, Kentucky in May for the world championships again. So we'll all be rooting for him and everything. Also attended the Sheriff's Department Awards last weekend, and Norco's team of officers got lots of recognition for the good things they've done. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. I went to several items, and one of the things I'm going to touch on real quick is our bimonthly meeting with the Citizens Advisory Committee regarding the California Rehabilitation Center. Over the years, we've heard, well, it's going to close, it's going to do this, they're going to shut it down. Well, according to the warden, they are probably not. They're actually increasing the population to their maximum, which will be up to 3210 as far as prisoners go. Prison population is increasing due to the fact that the out-of-state prisoners program, Housing in Mount State, is being ended by Governor Newsom. So with that, they're going to increase the population there. They're also going to look at bringing in a new medical facility there to make sure they stay up with federal mandates on housing ill and taking care of these sick inmates. Other programs being done there through the Norco College, as far as Prop 57, is to go ahead and continuing with their education and, hey, it's one way to guess to get a free college education in prison, but that's what they're going to do. So the idea, according to the warden, don't expect it to close anytime soon. So, and with that, I had one extra thing. Please, when you see the Western Community Energy Program, take a look at that. It's the CCAs. One of the things we're, we're going to be planning on is a starting date in 2020. And just so you know, there's seven other CCAs that are going to be starting, so we're going to impact a little bit of Southern California Edison with it, so we're trying to get an idea of when we're going to start that, when our startup date is for this, the Western Community Energy. So if you get a chance, go online, go to the Western Community Energy webpage, take a look at it, and see how... We're forecasting a 2% saving on your electricity bill. And I know it doesn't sound like much, but over a period of the year, it will be. The other thing that, and I didn't get a chance to put it on there, I want to thank Supervisor Karen Spiegel for, on George Ingalls Day, we did it there Tuesday morning. She presented us with a proclamation remembering George Ingalls for his sacrifice there in Vietnam in 1967, and we appreciate what she did for us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilman Bash.
Kind of a slow week for me. President Advisory Committee, WRCOG, the Admin Finance Committee, was kind of interesting. Today, though, I went to the Norco Chamber of Commerce meeting on a couple of things. One, our police chief did a great job. It was really nice to see him there. He's out and about, and he did a really good job letting people know about our great deputy service. Secondly, one of the big discussions at a couple of the meetings is about SB 50. SB 50 is the Weiner bill that they're trying to force high-density, low-income housing into the neighborhoods. It's taken... I'm really glad our mayor is actually going to go up and actually see this guy speak, but people just don't believe what's happening. There's over 100 bills to affect housing, literally, in the community. And so that's something we really have to pay attention to, and whenever possible, send in our support or not support for certain things. There's over 1,000 bills apparently that are going on up there. One of the kind of cool things, just as a sidelight, the girl softball team is now number two in the nation, but as I talked to the coach today, it's kind of like denting your car because one year, they went to the championship and hadn't lost a game, and the game they lost was the championship. I still think it was rigged. But I called up Dave Gonzalez, and I said, "Dave, they need a new scoreboard," and he said, "I'm in," and so he's going to take care of their scoreboard for them. So that's the kind of community we have. And then Sabrina Cervantes, I know some, you know, sometimes we have a little trouble with Sabrina, but one of the things she's putting out that you all should get is she has a calendar, and she will send this to anybody who wants it, and it is really fantastic about the coming events, and that's something that we just got. Other than that, that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, on April 4th, I attended the Chino Basin Desalter Authority Board Meeting. I had a couple of... Did we have a couple of slides? I just, since I don't tell you much about this board that I sit on and what projects we work on, I thought I'd just try to maybe expound a little bit. This is just a project status overview. These are two wells that we're completing, 2-10 and 2-11. You can click right through them. This is the completion of the Santa Anna River Crossing that we finished up in March, and right now, we're just testing the water lines. Hopefully, there'll be some drone footage of this that I'll be able to show, but that project is now complete. And this is just an overview of all the projects that we have in this immediate area that are either awarding contracts, in progress, future projects, and closeouts. So you can kind of tell in our vicinity here how much we actually do have going on. And this one, just kind of a heads up, this is a future project of a major water line that will go from Belgrave Avenue approximately from Archibald, picking up north on Archibald from the Ontario Ranch area, down Archibald, Belgrave Avenue, across the 15 freeway, and then up Wineville to the Desalter. And that'll be a future traffic nightmare for all of us. And I think, is that all of them? Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. So I don't have anything to report. So moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, City Council Consent Items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items to be removed. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under Item Number Three on our agenda. With that, do any council members have any items that they would like to be pulled?
Number F.
Any others?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Letter F. Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which were items pulled. Councilman Hanna.
Yeah, just a question for Chad. On your street projects over here, you got the extra turn lanes on Second and Sixth, deadline of June 30th, 2020. Is it going to be that long before they're done?
For Sixth Street, probably. I'm really struggling to get permits out of Caltrans. We're getting very close to the one for Second Street, so that for sure should be a project that we can complete next fiscal year. When it comes to Sixth Street, again, we've just started that process with them. They've got a lot of conditions, so it'll be several months before we get out through them, but I'm hopeful that once we're done, again, the plans are ready at that point, and we can get it out to bid. So my intent is try to get both done by the end of the fiscal year, but it's all depends on Caltrans.
It's only been five, six years getting that thing done, but I know you weren't here when it started, so thank you anyway.
Yep, no problem, sir.
And I'll make a motion to approve that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve Item F. Please vote. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Public Comments. This is a time when persons in the audience wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you can be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the City Council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The City Council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comments. Sergeant Ackoff.
Mayor, council, staff, and people behind me, I'd like to invite everybody to our upcoming Memorial Day ceremony on May 27th. I know it seems like a long time, but it's right around the corner. Also, I would like to invite everybody immediately after the... I would like to invite everybody, immediately after the Memorial Day Ceremony, we are having a steak fund due where they actually take a pitchfork, stick it in the steak, cook it, and serve it to the people in the audience. It's a fant, this is the second annual, uh, event. It is fantastic, and the proceeds from that, uh, go to fund the POW MIA Monument and other, um, other, uh, things that we do at the memorial. Also, uh, we have three, among, among others in the audience, we have three, uh, veterans here tonight, Kenny Chisholm, who served, uh, Marine Corps in Vietnam, Andy Webb, Army, served in Beirut, and Yvonne Scholl, USMC. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't say, "Buy a brick." If anybody needs to know about buying a brick, they can see me. Hoorah.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes public comments. Okay, so moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Legislative Matters. No new evidence will be heard, uh, from the public as the public hearing has been closed regarding the items listed. So we have Ordinance Number One-oh-four-nine, second reading, an ordinance of the city council amending Norco Municipal Code Chapter Six, Point Four-Two, and this is in regards to refuse, manure, and recycling collection.
To adopt Ordinance Number Ten-oh-fourty-nine.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Ordinance Number Ten-oh-fourty-nine. Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously. All right, on to Number Six, our Discussion and Action Items. Uh, we have two items this evening. Uh, so under Discussion and Action Items, we proceed in this order of presentation. Uh, we will have the staff report and presentation. Council members will then ask questions of staff. Uh, public speakers will then, uh, speak out in favor, against, or neutral. It will come back to council for discussion and action. So Item A this evening is the selection of Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee, and our city clerk will be giving that report.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, city council members. As a result of the passage of Measure R on January sixteenth of this year, the city council approved the formation of the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee, as well as the bylaws, the committee bylaws, which outlined provisions such as the term of the members, composition of the committee members, duties, responsibility, eligibility requirements, selection process, and more. At, as a result, or following the formation of that committee, the city clerk's office opened recruitment through, through the release of a public notice for a total of nine weeks. And during that period, the city clerk's office received fifty applications. Uh, my office thoroughly reviewed those applications to make sure that they were complete and that every applicant was a registered voter in the city of Norco. After that, we turned the applications over to Rogers, Anderson, Malady, and Scott, the independent third-party auditors, and they went through their own review process, which will be described in a bit more detail here shortly. Uh, so, uh, the, the auditors went ahead and, uh, through the review process, created a shortlist of applicants, of twenty-four applicants. And those, if, so for tonight, those, um, names will be put in a pool for the public lottery process. And, uh, this process is done through a third-party, uh, website. It's random.org, which I will go through step by step for the public to see on both screens. And, uh, this is a, this is the most fair and truly random process that staff has been able to identify. Uh, so, um, at this time, I'll turn it over to City Manager Okoro, and he'll continue on with the staff report.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, as the city clerk pointed out, uh, this review and screening process was done by, uh, the independent accounting firm of Rogers, Anderson, Malady, and Scott. Uh, two partners in the firm conducted the review, and, uh, unfortunately, they are not here tonight, uh, to, uh, due to a conflict. Uh, they have a conference in San Jose that they are currently attending, but a representative from the firm, a manager with the, with the firm, um, Mr. Charles Disimone, uh, is here this evening, and he will, uh, walk the city council through the procedures that they have undertaken in order to, uh, shortlist the candidates that are going to go into that drawing. And with that, Charles, if you could step up and, uh, provide your report.
Thank you. Uh, mayors, uh, city council, and staff, and citizens. Good evening, and my name is Charles Disimone. I'm a, an audit manager with Rams, and to make it short, Rogers, Anderson, Malady, and Scott. I've been with the firm for ten years, and I'm on behalf of, uh, Terri Chey, the partner who took on the engagement, uh, presenting what, what we did in relation to the selection of, pre-selection of the committee. Uh, a little bit of a background on who we are. Uh, Rams was founded in nineteen forty-eight. We have over seventy years of public accounting experience. We specialize in governmental auditing and accounting and, and management advisory services, so there is a lot of, a lot of experience in our firm in relation to, to government functions and, and selections. Uh, we service currently about fifty governmental entities of those twenty, uh, full-service cities. Uh, we are fully independent of the city of Norco. However, we are very familiar with your operation because we were your external auditors for several years, though the last engagement that we had with Norco was in, in two thousand and fourteen. In this case, we were engaged by management of the city to independently review and pre-select, uh, what's called a shortlist, uh, for members of the committee for you to do a final selection. What we did was we get familiar with, uh, Ordinance Ten-oh-fourty-one, uh, that provides for the implementation of the one percent tax, Measure R. Then we review Resolution Two Thousand and Nineteen-oh-one that establishes, uh, the formation of an oversight committee. Then we review the bylaws of the city of Norco, uh, to determine the eligibility and the function of the committee. And on March twenty-sixth, we were provided with, uh, fifty applications that were submitted by the citizens, and we have a listing at the end of the presentation of all the names of the applicants that were provided. The process went as follows. Uh, we have, uh, three, uh, governmental partners in the firm. The two senior ones were the ones who actually performed these procedures. Um, what they did is the application was reviewed independently, each of them, uh, by each of the partners. I'm in the top bullet right now. Uh, and we verified that they were eligible, uh, to serve according to Section Six of the bylaws. Then each application was read a second time, and the questions that were asked in the application were compared to Section Number Three of the bylaws, powers, duties, and responsibilities. And each reviewer, each partner made their individual separate notes in relation to the answers to start identifying the potential candidates. And this is the third and the most important item. If the partners did a third independent review, again, of the four most important questions that are being asked in the application, and they graded separately from one to five each of the questions. So when they were looking at the answer of each applicant in relation to the understanding of what the committee is, what is their function, how can they contribute, uh, to the functions of the committee? And after they did this independently, separately, they combined the score, and they weighted the average and came up with the top twenty-four applicants for the shortlist that it was provided to, uh, management for your selection. The process, uh, was very objective, uh, very simple and very clear, uh, and it was based strictly on the answers to each of those four questions by each of the applicants.
Does council have any questions? All right, thank you very much for taking your time and doing the presentation.
We really appreciate the opportunity to help again, the city. Thank you.
Does council have any other questions of any other staff? Okay, at this time, uh, we will move into, um, public comment. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card.
All right, so then, uh, we'll come back to council. Does council have any discussion or comments? I just have one real quick. I am so thankful to the people that filled out the application and stepped up to be a part of, um, the Citizens Oversight Committee. Traditionally, when we're soliciting applications for commissions and boards, we get maybe seven or eight. Um, to have fifty people take the time to fill out the application, to bring it over here to City Hall and drop it off, um, in my opinion, really speaks volumes to the commitment that a lot of residents have to this community, and how tied we are to this community, and that they want to do their part to contribute. So to every single person that filled out, uh, that application and took that time, I sincerely thank you and appreciate your time and effort to help make Norco the best it can possibly be. So thank you for doing that.
Madam Mayor, I have one question I should have asked earlier. Right now, we're selecting seven people, correct?
Correct.
Uh, are we going to include an alternate in that in case someone can't do it, one of the ones selected, or has a backup plan? I, I'm just asking the question.
I-
The city manager may be-
The resolution as, uh, as approved by the city council does not provide for an alternate.
Okay.
Obviously, if a vacancy, uh, comes about, uh, in the committee, we'll go through a recruitment process to fill that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
Yeah, I want to thank the consultant for explaining the criteria. That was one of my questions, and, and I'm glad you addressed that. But also, uh, as the mayor commented, that, uh, I thought, great, fifty qualified applicants, um, and I'm so glad that we had no involvement with this, believe me. Um, you don't, you can't appreciate it, but thank you all so much for your time and, uh, and your participation.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Is the city clerk ready?
I think so.
I'm so excited.
So hopefully this, uh, everyone can see this. I can't change the font or any, uh, the website here, but this is random.org. This is a, like I mentioned, a third-party random less generator, and I'm just going to walk you through the process here. Let me just bring this down a little bit here. Okay, so basically, we're going to start with step one, and I've already entered the title of, uh, this particular drawing, which is Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Members. This is a service that's used by different organizations and businesses. Um, sometimes, uh, businesses will use it to, um, solicit, uh, just some interest in their business. Enter-to-win, uh, trip-for-two or something, and so they get the registrants from social media, which is not the case for us. We simply just want to enter in the list, which is that third bulleted item there. The next step is how, we want to go ahead and insert the information or the, um, the persons that are going to be part of the drawing, so we could either upload a spreadsheet or we can paste it. And so I'm just going to go ahead and copy and paste because there are twenty-four names. And these names are in order of how it was presented on the shortlist. Oh, I'd simply copy and paste. I'll just go through them here so everyone sees that we have twenty-four. Yes. Yes. Aaron Haake, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce any names. Aaron Haake, Alan Werhane, Corinne Holder, Corey Spencer, Courtney Chastain, Curtis Coombs, James Carey, Jennifer Volz, Jerry Burke, John F. Glackem, John Latta, Johnny Lucas, Nancy Braggins, Rebecca Wheeler, Rami A., also known as Andy Webb, Thigrid Williams, Steve Costellanos, Susan Olmsted Bowen, Tara Lynn Yates, Terry Sandifer, Vincent Capel, Wayne D. Jordan, William Gake, Yvonne Scholl. So the next step here, we'll just do some validation on the names. Okay, so again, this, uh, box here is just validating that we have twenty-four entrants, and the identifiers are the entrants there, and I'll just go ahead and click on that, just again, to confirm once again that we have twenty-four total. And the green item there, the, the last line there, again, is just confirming that there are no blanks and no duplicates. Okay, uh, this is just asking, again, if we wanted to put this, uh, the results of this drawing, if we wanted to keep them private or make them public. Uh, for our purposes, yes, we do want it to be a public drawing because then this will generate a hyperlink, which I will then put on the city's website, and for folks that are interested to see the results through that method, they can. So we'll go ahead and click Public. Okay, so step five here is asking me how many, uh, winners we want from this drawing. So there are seven members for the Citizens Oversight Committee, so we'll go ahead and enter seven. And this is just yet another screen that's confirming everything before I go ahead and complete the drawing. So the title is the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Members. We want seven winners from the list of twenty-four entrants. This will be a public drawing. And here we go. There we go. So there are our seven members, Alan Werhane, Terry Sandifer, Tara Lynn Yates, Yvonne Scholl, Susan Olmsted Bowen, Vincent Capel, and William Gake. So give me just a moment, I need to copy and paste this for my records. Okay, so the next step here, we're going to do this one more time. And this will now be a drawing to determine the terms in which these members, the new members now, will, uh, be serving. So we're going to go through this process one more time. Okay, so in this case, let me explain how I'm going to do this. Different ways of doing it, but there will be four members with four-year terms, and three members with two-year terms. So I'm going to enter four, four times, and the number two, three times. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. Go ahead and proceed. Okay, so this is again validating, and it's just questioning me here because we do have some duplic- some duplicates, but that's, that is what I want. I want four four-year terms and two, excuse me, yes, three two-year terms. And we'll go ahead and proceed. To public drawing. And we do want seven results on this. Once again, it's just confirming we want seven winners from the seven entrants, which are the numbers for the terms. And now, this is the result of the placing for those members and the terms that they receive. So again, give me just a moment. Okay, so this is, these are the results. Again, for, just for purposes here, Mr. Werhane has a four-year term. Terry Sandifer is a two-year term. Tara Lynn Yates is a two-year term. Yvonne Scholl, two-year terms. Susan Olmsted Bowen is a four-year term. Vincent Capel is a four-year term. And William Gake is a four-year term. Are there any questions on this? Process, results, anything? Congratulations to the committee members.
Any questions from council?
What's the next step now?
The next step is, will be, I'm sorry? Yes, well, we're going to, we'll need a motion to approve, formalize the results. Staff is, this, staff is working on a date for the first meeting of the Citizens Oversight Committee, which will be soon as possible. I'd say within the next two weeks at the most. So I will notify the winners of the next steps.
Thank you, Cheryl. Good job.
Any other questions or?
I want to make a motion to approve the results as submitted by the city clerk.
It's been properly moved and segmented to approve the results of the public lottery as seen on the screen.
Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, moving on to 6B, Hamner Avenue Bridge Replacement Initial Study and Proposed Mitigated Negative Declaration, a request to adopt the mitigated negative declaration. And this would be Mr. King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a proposed initial study and draft mitigated negative declaration that's being brought to you tonight for the Hamner Bridge Replacement Project. It's a multi-agency project that's in design right now. The staff report says it's about 75% complete. I think it's closer to 90 by now. This is a fast-track project because there's a deadline for when the funds will be available to help pay for it, which is, the project needs to be completed by the end of 2023 to be eligible for those funds. The County of Riverside Transportation Department is the project manager for design, approval, and construction of the project. But because it's within the city limits of the city of Norco, we are the lead agency and are responsible for the adoption of the SEQA documents, which is the mitigated negative declaration and the initial study. The project design, real briefly, it's going to be three 12-foot lanes in north-south directions with a four-foot shoulder in each direction over the bridge and separated by a four-foot curb median. And then there'll be a 12-foot separated, barrier-separated, multipurpose trail on the east side of the trail. North and south of the bridge, it'll still also be three 12-foot lanes and a four-foot shoulder in each direction, and then a five-foot sidewalk on the east side of the roadway. At the intersection with Citrus Street to the north, in Eastville, there'll be two left-turn dedicated, left-turn lanes from northbound Hamner Avenue. And then, southbound at Detroit Street, there'll be a southbound, one southbound dedicated left-turn lane onto Detroit Street. At the, both ends of the barrier-separated trail, there will be a trail ramp that will take the trail down to the regional Santa Ana River Trail, which will connect either side of the bridge. In the SEQA analysis, the initial study has 21 categories that are required to be identified and analyzed for potential impacts from the project. Out of those, most of them did not have any impact identified, or the impact was very little or minimal, required very little mitigation to, to, to resolve those impacts. So the ones I'm going to talk about tonight, there's about five of them, and I don't know how to move this thing. Oh, there we go. I'll briefly talk about them tonight. The first one is aesthetics. Mostly, the project will have a less-than-significant impact. Actually, it's going to have no impact with the exception of temporary impacts caused by construction equipment moving in and out of the project site. And the mitigation for that is a screening of the construction equipment and materials during the construction phases of the project. The only other impact that was identified is new light and glare. I should have gone through what needs to be addressed from the initial study for aesthetics. It's scenic vistas, scenic resources, visual character, and new lighter glare. New lighter glare was the only other item that was identified to potentially have a significant impact. But with the mitigations of downcast fixtures, cutoff fixtures, and shielding, they'll be able to minimize those impacts to a less-than-significant impact. For air quality, the issues that need to be addressed are whether it conflicts with an applicable air quality plan, whether it violates an air quality standard, or projected air quality violation will result in a cumulatively considerable net increase of any criteria pollutant for which the region is non-attainment. And those are the, those are the chemicals that are the primary compounds that result in smog. Fourth, exposed sensitive receptors to pollutant concentrations. A sensitive receptor is something like a school or a senior center or something like that. And then fifth, would it create objectionable odors? In the analysis, the only, the only impact that was identified that could potentially be a significant impact was the creation of objectionable odors from construction equipment, and that's going to be mitigated through maintenance of the vehicles, exhaust filters, and then, not related to odor, but dust control as well. The next category that had some potential impacts were biological resources. In this category, the mitigated negative, well, the initial study first has to address direct impacts to species or indirect impact on habitat for those species of concern. Species of concern are listed as endangered species or potentially endangered species. Second, it needs to look at the impact to riparian habitat or other sensitive natural community. Third, it needs to look at this potential impact on federally protected wetlands as defined in the Clean Water Act. Fourth, it needs to identify if there's interference with the movement of native residents or migratory fish or wildlife species. Fifth, it needs to determine if there's a conflict with local policies or ordinances that protect biological resources. And then lastly, it needs to look at whether or not there is a, any impact to provisions that are protected through a habitat conservation plan, which in Norco and Riverside County is the MSHCP plan. Mostly, the project will have a less-than-significant impact. There were three species that were identified where there potentially could be impact. One of those is the San Ana sucker, which is a special status species. And the conclusion of Caltrans from the biological studies that were presented to them is that the project may affect, but is not likely to adversely affect the San Ana sucker or its habitat. And that compliance with the mitigation measures will minimize the potential impacts to that fish species. The second species that was identified was leasebells vireo, bird species that is an endangered species. With the studies that was, that were prepared, Caltrans determined that the project may affect and is likely to adversely affect leasebells vireo. However, with the mitigation measures that are part of the project, the, they will minimize the disturbance to that species as much as possible. And anything that cannot be protected, there is, there are mitigation measures to compensate for the loss of any of that species. And then the last, last animal or bird or bat that was found to, to be potentially impacted was roosting bats, which are known to roost in both the Hamner Avenue and the I-15 Bridge over the river. The determination of Caltrans was that the removal of the bridge will temporarily remove roosting, roosting locations, but since there are plenty of other sites available, the impact of that will be minimal. And there will be people, biological monitors on site that if there are roosting bats at the time of work to be done, they will have to remove those consistent with requirements of the biological monitor. Geology and soils, again, mostly less-than-significant impact. As a Caltrans project, a comprehensive geotechnical, geotechnical study will have to be performed to identify any potential expanse of soils or other soils that are, could result in instability, lateral spreading, liquefaction, or collapse. And if those are identified, then mitigation measures will be included as part of the project to compensate for those. Other than that, the, it was determined to be a less-than-significant impact. For greenhouse gas emissions, the, the only potential impact that was identified was the potential increase in emissions that, that may amount from, or may occur from detours and routing around the project site during construction because of slowed traffic. And with the mitigation measures that have been included in the project, those impacts are anticipated to be less than significant. I'm almost done. Hydrology and water, the, again, most of the impacts were determined to be less than significant. There were mitigation measures included as part of the project, and if those are followed, then all of the impacts will be less than significant. For noise, the potential impacts were identified as all related to construction, also ground-borne vibrations related to construction. And all of those, if the project is done in compliance with the mitigation measures, those two will be less than significant. And then lastly, the, the other category that had potential impacts was transportation and traffic. And then the only issue identified in that is emergency access times and response times for sheriff and fire departments. They will have to prepare a traffic management plan, and that will be adjusted and changed as needed during the construction phases of the project so that those impacts will be less than significant as well. So with that, all of the, all of the impacts of the project have been determined to be less than significant. With the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration, the county will continue to proceed with the design phases of the project and then start implementing construction so that their project timeline meets the funding deadline in 2023, which they are on task, are on task to do. So with that, the recommendation is that the city council will direct me to sign the mitigated negative declaration and notice of determination. And then we will file that with the county clerk, and then the county will proceed with its, with its tasks on the project.
Thank you, Mr. King. Does council have any questions of staff? Councilman Newton.
Steve, under, on page nine, land use and planning, no impact?
No impact.
I just want to make sure, on the, south of the river, the residential properties on the east side and the west side, there will be no taking?
No.
No, no impact on those properties?
No, everything is within right-of-way.
Within public right-of-way, yes.
Okay. And then, north of the river, is same question. Is there any taking of, let's say, our leasehold properties north of the river?
No.
None?
No, no impact there at all. Okay, thank you.
Other question?
Go ahead, Kevin, if you have. The only other is, and Councilman Newton, the repairing area on the, which would be the west side of the north side of Hamner by Citrus that we own our property. No, they're probably removed that then?
What they're going to do is minimize the impact as much as possible, and where it can't be, where they can't, where they can't absolutely not take any of the riparian habitat. They're going to redirect water flow so that there's continuous water for the species that would be associated with that habitat. And for permanent impact, they, they already have included in the project mitigation measures off-site that will compensate for that.
The area I'm talking about is just the area south of Citrus?
Yes.
And, okay, and Hamner. And then, do our, well, you, this is only the mitigation factor. It has nothing to do with the construction. Thanks, Steve.
Councilman Bash?
I just want to thank staff. When I got on council, we'd been told that the bridge was imminent, remember Berwind? It was all set, ready to go. And in my first meeting, Beth Groves said, "There's no bridge." We were like, "There's no bridge." So I want to thank Beth Groves. I want to thank staff. I want to thank Andy Acoro. I mean, the reality is Chad, anybody who had anything involved in this. This was a mammoth undertaking. We actually took Ken Calvert out back and twisted his arm and said he's got to come up with money or else. Kind of, we kind of actually did that. But I want to thank staff for seeing this through. This is, we went from zero in 2010, early 2010, to where we are now, and it should be done by 2023. Senator Roth for coming through, helping us out there. It was kind of interesting. We had SB1 money, and it actually was already funded, so we were able to take that money and put it to, to improve Hamner Avenue. So we actually got like a two-for-one, which is a really good deal. So thank you, staff, very, very much for this. It's been a long haul for you guys. Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Councilman Hannah?
Thanks, Steve. And Kevin, to correct you on that, this, we were told 20 years. But this actually started in December of 2010 when the flood came. Some of us went over to Ken Calvert's office in Tavolones, and they got started on it. And even agreed it should have been started in the process 10 years before that. So it's moving along pretty good. Thank you.
Steve, I have a question for you, just on the noise mitigation area. And in the report, it talked about on the southwest side, Poly Drive, basically, that three residents were surveyed about the wall, and two said yes, and one said no. And I'm not sure how many houses are there, but what is the mitigation going to be for that area?
The, the default mitigation was to put a permanent wall about 10 feet off the property line in the city's right-of-way. But there's already been discussions with homeowners who've, who have indicated an interest in having that wall be developed on their property as part of their, so replacing what they have now and putting a new wall in place, and, and talking to them about what that wall would look like, whether it be brick and mortar, what it might be, have some plexiglass, because some folks have talked about they wanted to still see the views. But the, the county said they're- But they, the county said they're going to start that discussion with the individual property owners of, of how they may accomplish that. But the county said they're open to that and accomplish that so they don't have a, basically a 10-foot wall sitting by itself, or a 10-foot-high wall sitting by itself, 10 feet off property, covering three properties, that basically is going to become a high-maintenance issue for the city because it's just going to be a graffiti wall. So they're going to approach it in that way, if they can get a consensus with the homeowners and get agreement of what the wall could be built like on their property to replace what they have now, then they'll go that route. If not, then they will build the default wall 10-foot off property along that whole section of, of those three homes.
And is that at the southernmost end of Poly Drive, or where, where is that area? I was trying to tell on the map, and I can't.
It's the, probably the, it's the three homes closest to Detroit, go, and then going north.
Okay. And so as far as that goes, that's on the county, we are not involved. Is that correct?
Yes, they, they're taking care of everything as far as, working on that. We're going to end up facilitating a meeting with the homeowners, probably onsite, so we can walk through, kind of show what the options are and what they may or not want. So we're going to, there's going to be a lot of discussions about that, how it can be done, but they've already committed to, with that approach, and only if we can't get a consensus and agreement, because the requirement is, they have to have that mitigation as a whole. It's either, it has to be all the homeowners on the property, or it has to be 10 feet off property line, one wall, so they can't split, because it's a requirement of the mitigation for the noise. But they're willing to try to give something that hopefully the residents will be happier with as far as a solution.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Or second?
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the initial study and mitigated negative declaration and direct the planning director to sign the document as final and post the notice of determination with the Riverside County Recorder's Office.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, moving on to item number seven, which is City Council, City Manager, and Staff Communications. We'll start with Councilman Newton.
One thing, um, to direct Gina, and this is in regard to, don't have that look, this is a good thing, to Julie Hauser. So Monday morning, I got a message from a resident about trash truck ate her manure can, and so she was in the panic mode, and so I gave her the information, contacted Julie. Julie contacted this resident almost right away, got the can replaced the same day. But the thing I wanted to tell you about Julie is that what the resident told me was that she felt that Julie made her feel special. And so however you're managing your department, and Andy, I think you need to share that with Julie. She did a great job.
Definitely will, and I'm very proud of the group. We've got, went through, Julie was here before I got here, so, but I have to say, the team overall, the customer service levels are, are high, we're continually looking to improve ourselves. And Julie, she's, as you know, she sits right across from me, so I hear the phone calls that come in, and, you know, some people, of course, are frustrated, and she just has a way of, you know, saying, "I'm here to help," and they'll call back, they'll call back for other issues, just to talk to her. So I will share that with her and the team. Thank you.
All right, Cheryl?
Nothing.
Matt? Chad? Steve? Hank, welcome. Glad to have you this evening. Gina?
Yes, sorry about that. I'd like to let everybody know we had a fee study, a study session today for about two hours. It will be uploaded, uh, maybe, well, Monday, hopefully, sooner. And we'll try to do our best to incorporate all the information that we had, so they can listen to the communications as well as see it on the screen. But thank you all again for your patience today, and we look forward to the next study session, which is May 1st, from 4 to 6, and it'll be on recreation fees. And then final adoption will be the second meeting in, plus, it doesn't have to be the second meeting in May, we can extend it for more communications, but that's the plan, to adopt it the second meeting in May.
Perfect, thanks. Chief? Lieutenant? Councilman Hannah?
Yes, I just want to welcome the two substitutes tonight, Hank and Chief Blake. And if you noticed, Chief Blake stays the whole meeting, his phone don't ring, and he leaves out the door. Thank you.
Councilman Hoffman?
Yeah, I too want to thank Chad, tell your crews that are helping with the trees out there. As you're appreciated when I got a call from a lady and information regarding bees in the trees, that even though they're cutting them down, as someone who's allergic to bees, I know the importance of getting rid of them. So thank you guys very much for taking care of that.
Andy? John? Kevin?
All right, just a reminder, Horse Week is in full swing, and we still have, I think, four more days of activities. So if you haven't gotten up to Georgia Ingalls Equestrian Event Center, make sure and make your way up there and try and catch one of the activities at Horse Week. So ladies and gentlemen, with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting at 8:25.